I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How you doing, Dave?
Thanks. Sorry about that.
Good morning again and welcome to the May 7th meeting. Remind everyone to silence their phones if they haven't, or for those of us who forgot their phone at home, life will be quiet, which is good. If you need a hearing device, Mr. Wilson has those right there and he would be able to help you with that. With that, we will go to item one.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of April 30th, 2013.
Do we have a motion to approve the minute? Second. Any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three.
Our bills to be paid in the amount of $434,841.19.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Barth?
The bills today include $172,000 for Metro 911. And additionally, there's eight occurrences where in our human services department, we've paid the maximum of $420 to pay someone's XL or electrical bill. That's the most we'll pay and it's, I've never seen eight of them on one bill before. But, you know, we did request the PUC not to raise those electrical rates and now we're getting an influx, obviously, of these coming our way and that will continue.
Any other comments about the bills? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The Minnehaha County Human Services Report for April 2013 and the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office Report for April 2013 have been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Motion to approve routine action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve routine action. Good morning, John.
Good morning.
Does anyone have any questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for May 2013. Jenny Addicks.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jenny Addicks from Human Resources. This month, we have quite a few significant anniversaries at the county. With five years of service, Tom Lean, he's a certified civil process server at the sheriff's office. Ben Devlin, he's a museum interpreter at the museum. Craig Bodal, he is a correctional officer with the 24/7 program. Angie Buckle is here today. She's our camera specialist at the equalization office. And myself, I work in HRs.
How long have you been here? How long have you been here?
Five years.
Oh, okay.
Five years with all of those people, yep. Celebrating 10 years of service this year is Pablo Rasmussen. He's the education assistant at the museum. Philip Liedholt, he's a deputy with the sheriff's office. And Mark Russell, he is an air guard security officer out at the air guard. And celebrating 15 years of service this month is Janet Harmelley. She's our senior custodian with the facilities department.
Awesome. Well, again, thank you for your service. The county doesn't operate any more efficiency, efficiently without the support of experienced employees and we appreciate your dedication to the commission and to the county for all the things that you do and for the 15 years. You're trying to hide from me.
[laughing]
We sincerely appreciate everything you've done, so thank you so much.
Item number C is to recognize volunteers and county government for April 2013.
For the month of April, we had over 200 volunteers that donated their time and that was in the Sulaan Heritage Museums, the public defender's office, state's attorney's office, and the emergency management department.
It's awesome. Unbelievable that we have that much support consistently and again, we don't operate as effectively and efficiently without those volunteers, so thank you so much for your time and efforts. Thank you, Jen.
Item number six, our application for abatement. Kyle Helseth.
Good morning, Commissioner's Kyle Helseth, Equalization Office. We bring before you one request this morning on record ID 72774 for 2012 property taxes in the amount of $1,365.20. This is for a veteran's exemption granted by the Boards of Equalization.
Any questions for Kyle?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the abatement of $1,365.20 on ID 72774. Any other comments from the audience or from commissioners? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item seven are notices and requests. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Project MC 142 CONC-13, County Highway 142 Pavement Restoration and Concrete Joint Repair.
Motion to authorize publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have comments?
If you don't have any.
That's an experienced employee. No questions, we will publish on, yeah, I was looking for the date, but...
I'll make the motion to publish.
We did.
We already did, but I don't see the date on my sheet.
It says May 13th, May 20th. Door Rapids Tribune, May 15th, and Hartford Area News, May 16th.
Thank you. Good.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would just add, this is also tied to item 11 or 12 coming up.
Yep. We have a motion and a second to approve the authorization to publish bidders on the project for County Highway 142. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item eight are planning and zoning notices. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider the vacation of the public right-of-way described as Edgeview Court lying between Lot 2, Block 5, SORM subdivision, Lot 1, Block 4A, SORM subdivision, and Track 4. SORM's addition all in Section 9 Township 102 North, Range 49 West. Dustin Powers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dustin Powers with the Planning Department. Jason Erickson has submitted a petition to vacate Edgeview Court, which is north of Renner Corner on the west side of South Dakota Highway 115. There's some issues with buildings being in the right-of-way there. It was platted in the early 70s and has never been constructed. The road hasn't. There's been an agreement between the three landowners, the one to the north, the south, and then the farmer to the west, to get this road vacated and then redo their plat lines so that the buildings will be on their properties and not in the right-of-way. So this is just a first reading to publish the notice. So action should be taken, authorized the auditor to publish notice for the June 4th meeting for the public hearing to be held at 9:15 and that has to be published two consecutive weeks, so it'd be published on May 13th and May 20th.
Okay. Thank you, Dustin. Do you have any questions for Dustin?
Make a motion to approve publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve publication. We do not take public comment correctly on the first reading. Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
There are no petition for compromise of lean today. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Good morning. Again, if anyone in the audience has any comments that they would like to make about any of the items that are not on the agenda and has any input, we would be happy to hear from you. Otherwise, we will go to the agenda items again. I don't see anyone coming, so we'll go to regular business.
Item 10 is consider a bid award for Project MC 150-202-1 Ellis Bridge Beam Procurement and authorize the chairman to sign contracts for construction.
Yeah, we're tag teaming. Tom Willsey, Minnehaha County Highway. Pursuant to your authorization, we had the letting for the beams for the Ellis Bridge. Bids came in quite close, which we were very happy, and under the engineer's estimate by $28,000. We recommend that you authorize, sign the contract for Gage Brothers at $114,052.29.
Thank you, Tom. Does anybody have any questions for Tom first?
I think the bid is 114,257. Mine says 114,257.
Mine's 052.
Yeah, mine's 052. I will see. Just a sec, I have another. Mine says, yeah, 257. I got, I mixed the numbers up. As long as we have it right. Yeah, 114,257.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the contract to Gage Brothers for 114,257, correct? Any comments? Other comments? We have a motion and a second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Tom.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign amendment in the amount of $10,238 to the preliminary design contract with Infrastructure Design Group for structures 50-240-095 and 50-240-085 on Highway 121 over Slip Up Creek. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Shannon Schultz with the Minnehaha County Highway Department. I am the senior engineer. You have previously approved the design contract for this, so this is an amendment due to some increased challenges on some drainage issues. The landowners during easement and right-of-way negotiations requested some additional hydraulics evaluations be done regarding drainage and some landowners not immediately adjacent to the project also kind of accompanied some landowners to meetings and so the project got a little more complex. We had to pay our consultant, or we'll have to pay our consultant, an additional survey to capture some more drainage data as well as some additional hydraulic design and then some, also some additional landowner interfaces, so that's what the purpose of the amendment is about.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone have any questions for Shannon? Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion to approve, unanimously. Okay. We have a motion to approve the $10,238 fee. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 12 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with JSA engineers and land surveyors in the amount of $31,899 to provide construction management services for Project MC 142 CONC-13, County Highway 142 Pavement Restoration and Concrete Joint Repair. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again. This is again closely tied with item 7, the construction of our single three lanes of concrete highway in our county. And JSA did the design and they are also quite experienced in the construction side. In fact, they were the engineers on all the work on 41st Street. I will add that compared to our concrete repair versus 41st Street, ours is significantly less intense. It's just a lot longer, so...
Questions for Shannon? Commissioner?
Shannon, aren't we planning on doing more of our own surveying and we're not doing it in this case? Is that...
Construction administration is not necessarily surveying. In fact, there's very little surveying on this because this is a surface repair. It's mostly measuring the size of the repairs, delineating which joints need to be repaired, performing quality assurance, quality control such as concrete testing, and making sure we've got strength on cylinder brakes before we open up the traffic, maintaining traffic control and things like that. So the question about surveying doesn't really apply to this concrete road construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Shannon?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second to approve the consulting services. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Item number 13 is a briefing and presentation of Minnehaha County Petition Gatherers Policy Committee Report and Recommendations. Aaron Serska.
Good morning, Aaron.
Good morning. So I'm here just to brief you on how our petition gatherers meeting went a few weeks ago. We had a, we had, we have five committee members. We have Commissioner Jeff Barth and Commissioner Cindy Heiburger. Jeff Cleveland is also a committee member and he is assistant news director of KSFY. And then Brooke White, she was our other committee member and she's with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. And then we also had a good attendance from the public, probably about 10 to 12 folks showed up to be a part of this and put in their opinion. And kind of what we did is we looked at the current policy. If you, I provided a brief. Committee looked at the current policy and have a recommendation to leave the policy as is. And then they looked specifically at the part of the policy that has to do where petition gatherers locate in inclement weather. And we have a set of four recommendations on where to have petitioners gather, stand in the inclement weather. One is to stand in the breezeway, which it currently is. Second is to stand directly inside the doorway to the side of the wall. One of the advantages of that is it eliminates kind of congestion in that breezeway. However, that's where the directory and bathrooms are for the first floor of the building. The third option, they talked about was constructing a shelter right outside the doorway, similar to that of a bus stop. Eliminates congestion again in the walkway. However, there is a cost associated with that and doesn't necessarily address all inclement weather. The fourth one was to construct a new, more open entrance, which again would eliminate that congestion in that breezeway, provide a more welcoming entrance, however, there is a cost associated with that as well. The overall consensus of the committee members and of the general public is that petition gathering is something that's an important part of our government and institution and that it words that very well directly in our policy and we want to continue that. However, we just wanted to provide the commission with recommendations on where to have the petitioners stand in inclement weather because when it's nice outside, they are able to stand outside and not congest the doorway and the entryway. So those are our recommendations. Keep the policy as is. The group said as long as there's only one petitioner standing in that breezeway and they stand out of the way, just to keep it as is that way for now. However, we wanted to provide you with four options to choose from in that manner.
Thank you, Aaron. It's my understanding that this needs to be placed on an agenda item for future approval you put in on next week. We can either wait, do questions at that point, or you can ask questions again current, today and next week if you'd like.
Yeah, just a reminder to the commission. According to state law, whenever you receive a report from a committee that you've appointed and receive the committee report, you can't take any action on that report on the day that you hear it. Any action has to be done following the week. And if you either want to make a motion to keep the policy as it is or any other changes to the policy, you can't do that today. You have to wait that week.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Heiburger?
I just want to thank Aaron for stepping forward when we had this discussion in the first place about a couple of months ago and offering to chair this and getting the group together and organize the meeting and keeping it well organized. It was actually a fairly speedy meeting. And then just one more comment is that since the driver's license has moved out, the traffic coming in from our west parking lot has changed significantly, so thanks, Aaron.
I'll make a motion to set it on the agenda for next week.
I don't believe we can even...
I'm just going to do that.
Yeah.
It'll just be on the agenda.
Then I'll withdraw my motion.
You didn't get a second anyway.
Typical.
Yeah. Again, Aaron, thank you for your work in coordinating that. I know that publicly it was a hot topic, but you did a great job of making things happen quickly and we appreciate your leadership in that. We will put that on the agenda for next week and we'll see you again. And I think you're also up on the next item, correct?
Yes.
Item 14 is to authorize the chairman to sign agreements with Lutheran Social Services, Bartel's Counseling, Prairie View Prevention Services, Christine Ellis Keystone Treatment Center, and Great Plains Psychological Services in conjunction with JDAI Disproportionate Minority Contact Grant. Aaron Serska.
Good morning again. This is in reference to the JDAI initiative. One of the main core strategies is to look at disproportionate minority contact and try to implement different interventions to help lower that. Back in September, the commission approved us accepting a $60,000 grant to assist with DMC work. A majority of that, 40,000 of it, went to do a community assessment with the Burns Institute, which they completed last month and we're awaiting a report from that. The other 20,000 was to implement a voucher system. This voucher system provides need-based services to minority youth that are in a county-appointed diversion program. And the idea is to offer these community-based interventions early on in the justice system to prevent them from getting further in. So the DMC Work Group, who is chaired by Carol James and Tate Walker, we vetted out and sent out requests for contracts for these providers based on state rates. And as you can see, we had six community providers step up. Bartel's, Integrative Wellness, which is Christine Ellis, Prairie View Prevention, Great Plains Psychological, Keystone, and Lutheran Social Services. So as soon as we can get approval to have these signed, we can go ahead and get this system started.
Thank you, Aaron. Is there any questions, Aaron? Looking for a motion?
I'll make another motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the audience? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppo, or, you know, opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 15 is to authorize the chairman to sign the 2013 contract addendum between Minnehaha County and CBM Managed Services for inmate food contract. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, the county has a contract for inmate food services with CBM Managed Services, formerly known as Catering by Marlins, in that to provide food both at the detention center, the county jail, and the corrections center. That particular contract is multi-year in nature and, excuse me, it allows for an adjustment in the per meal price upon publication of the CPI index specifically as it relates to the food service area. Our current price per meal in that at the jail is 82 cents and under this addendum for increase, that will raise to 84 cents, the meal, so a 2 cent increase. The snacks will increase from 58 cents per snack to 60 cents per snack. And this rate change would be effective July 1, 2013, and it would run through June 30th of 2014. Just as an aside, our 2013 budget for inmate meals at the jail and the corrections center is $555,000. I expect that we will bring another agreement to you when that's prepared for the JDC and that, that's a rate that's significantly different because of the less volume of meals, but we don't have that one yet. And we would, the sheriff and the warden have reviewed this addendum and we all recommend approval of the addendum.
Thank you, Ken. Does anyone have any questions, Ken? If not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve. I do have a comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Just want to say that Catering by Marlins, CBM, is really a wonderful success story and their introduction into this type of service which they provide for other governments was Minnehaha County.
It was.
Now they have operations in, I don't know, 22 states or something.
There's a bunch of them.
And they started right here.
Thank you. Any comments from the audience? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the contract with CBM, excuse me. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
I just have a comment, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I frequently get asked by people that say, well, would you ever eat that food? And I have. It's just great.
However, we do not want you to stay too long. We're a real client.
How did you get out?
I spent the night in 2003 and Ken was there.
I just want you to know, you're the one that brought it up.
That's right.
Moving on. Item number 16, consider a motion to supplement $17,028.50 from the Emergency Food and Shelter Program Fund to the Emergency Food and Shelter Program budget representing the second half of the 2013 EFSP allocation. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, Carol Mueller, Human Services. This is the second half of an award from Emergency Food and Shelter Program. It's a program that actually comes underneath the federal FEMA program. We're doing things a little bit different this year and we've been pleased with how it's been going in terms of using the dollars from some rapid rehousing and some food assistance in the community. We're meeting next week and hopefully we're going to learn some good things from it and be able to use that as we continue to move forward with other opportunities. So we request for this supplementation to take place.
Thank you, Carol. Anyone have any questions for her?
Motion to approve the supplement?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the supplement. Any comments or questions from the audience? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 17 is consider a motion to allocate 100% $52,481.22 of the proceeds from the sale of county property surplus items for the period of January 1, 2013 to April 30, 2013 to the general fund ASN 13740, or to allocate the funds to the highway fund ASN 13983, or split the allocation between the two funds. Darlene Johnson.
Good morning, Darlene Johnson from the Auditor's Office. Several times during the year, the commission has asked to, to look at the items, the dollar amounts that we've received for the sale of county property or surplus items. And you have the option of allocating all of that to the general fund or to split it among whatever funds originally purchased those items. So far this year, we've received $52,481.22. A large portion of that was for a large highway surplus item through Iron Planet of 42,67704 and then there were some additional scrap items. So we are asking either you allocate it to general fund or split it or whatever your determination is.
Thank you, Darlene. Any questions for her?
I would move to split the allocation, half to the highway fund, half to the general.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'd make a substitute motion.
We have a substitute motion? Do we have, go ahead and make that.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to put the highway surplus from the Iron Planet and the TJN Enterprises highway scrap to the highway department and to put the facility scrap to, that to go to the highway fund. And the facility scrap, which is $1,462.89, to go to the general fund.
Do we have a... I'll second then.
We have a motion and a second, an amended motion of $1,462.89 going to the general fund and the balance to the highway fund, correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
I'm going to support Commissioner Heiburger's motion, but I would favor giving it all to the highway department. In the past, we've certainly taken some from the highway department and put it in the general fund and perhaps today we could give a little back.
Any other comments? If not, I'll use chair privilege again and as you well know, this is kind of a pet peeve of mine, I guess. I think sometimes we use the highway fund as a fundraising arm because we buy it with highway funds and then we can put it back in the general fund legally. I think there's a problem with that. And I think wherever the money came from originally, it needs to go back, so I'm going to support Commissioner Heiburger's motion. Any other comments or questions, Commissioner Beckus?
Well, I'll just say philosophically, I agree with your premise. However, I will just say over and over again that if every single department that raises funds, however they raise them, could silo them in their own particular departments, we would be out of business.
And I would argue that there's only two... And I would argue that there's only two funds, the highway department and the general fund.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
So, are we done with that one?
No, we can go back.
Okay. Everybody understand the amendment that was made?
So...
We'll do a roll call vote just in case.
Okay. Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
No.
Pecus?
No.
Benega?
Yes. Motion passes three to two. We'll now vote on the amended motion. And again, we will do the...
That was the substitute.
Oh, it was a substitute. Ah, that's easier.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good job. We'll go to the next item.
Item 18 is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Southeastern Council of Governments for Administrative Assistance for the CNA Workforce Training Expansion Grant Project. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, back in January, you approved an agreement to sponsor a CDVG for workforce development project for Southeast Technical Institute, and it was for their Certified Nursing Assistant Training Program. One of the documents necessary to complete the CDVG package and the grant file is the agreement between us and CCOG for them to perform the administrative assistance for that grant project, and that is in the amount of $5,000. The one thing I do want to remind you is that you are not responsible for that payment. That's not county funds that make that payment. That is part of the grant application, and that is supported by grant funds. And that, so, we are recommending that you authorize the chairman to sign the agreement.
Thank you, Ken. Any questions for Ken?
Both to authorize.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the agreement.
I just have a comment. I think SETI, you know, through a deal like this is a real service to the community and gives us some current... Current needs are met right away instead of going through all the process that a college has to go through. So, I think it's a very good program, and the grant to do it is even better.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item 19 is Consider Drainage Permit Application 13-13 from Raymond Funk to Conduct Agricultural Drainage on the Southeast Quarter Section 10, Township 101 North, Range 49 West, Valley Springs Township. This was deferred from April 23. Dustin Powers.
Morning again. We had seen this two weeks ago on April 23, and at that time, the Drainage Board had indicated to defer the action for two weeks. So, we are bringing the Drainage Permit 13-13 back in front of you. Just a kind of a summary of what happened after the last two weeks ago. The applicant, Raymond Funky, was applying for drainage permits in Section 10 of Valley Springs to do the drainage proposed on the screen. At that time, the representative, Edwin Batts, for the downstream landowner, had showed up and indicated that they are in the process of getting a wetland determination from the NRCS, but that was not completed yet, therefore staff could not issue the downstream landowner a drainage permit to allow this to be one continuous project. I would say that yesterday afternoon, I spoke with Brian Top, who does some of the work for the NRCS, the field work for the NRCS, to do the wetland determinations. He indicated that he was out there yesterday and completed the wetland determination on the property, the downstream property, and that there are no wetlands so that I can issue a drainage permit for the downstream landowner. I will not be able to get the paperwork from the NRCS for a couple of days, but based on what Brian Topitz told me, I will be able to issue the drainage permit. I know both of the applicant and the downstream representatives are here today. I'm not sure if any of them would like to say anything with regards to the application. Otherwise, staff is recommending approval of the Funky Drainage Permit 13-13.
Okay. Thank you, Dustin. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Dustin?
I'm going to make a motion to approve this then, and I do have a question for Dustin.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I know that one of the individuals would like to make a comment, but we'll start with a petitioner. Does a petitioner want to make any comments? Please come to the mic if you'd like. Again, we need your name and address.
I'm Ray Funky, from Minneapolis, South Dakota. Yeah, we appreciate to get the permit. We'd like to get started as soon as possible because I have a tiler finishing up on some other property, and he's willing to go up there now. And if I can't get him up there now, I may not get him back till...
Any questions for Mr. Funky?
Just a comment.
Just... I'll go ahead.
Quick comment, then. Just that I hope that you'll work with the neighbors so that as you get your tiling done, it's ready to be hooked into there so we don't have problems when it gets locked down.
They can hook right onto it.
Yep.
I believe at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Funky? If not, Mr. Batts?
All I want...
You'll need to come to the mic, please.
All I want, and he already said it, all I wanted to do is make sure we're able to tie into the line.
You need to give us... I know, we know who you are, but please do it.
Edwin Batts.
Okay.
I live at 4512 South Florence in Sioux Falls, and I'm representing the two downstream landowners here, my wife and sister-in-law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything kind of fell into place yesterday, and I don't care if it takes any more of your time. I'd just like to thank Dusty for helping us and Brian for doing it yesterday, and the commission for giving us two weeks breathing space, especially Mr. Barth for your motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate the fact that it worked out. And we do have a motion and a second to approve...
Mr. Chair, I do have a question for Dustin.
Commissioner Barth?
On this, you know, normally we allow multiple landowners to be on the same permit. Will we be able to let both landowners in this case be on the same permit, or will they have to...
We could allow that. The issue that we run into with this, because we're extending the project, it requires more downstream notification. There's an additional landowner, which actually is the tenant of the downstream property, so there shouldn't be an issue of getting that signature. We just have to make sure we get that signature before I can allow Ed and the property owners to extend onto their property.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Dustin? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you again for your cooperation and your patience.
Item number 20 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Do we have any liaison reports from the commissioners? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have several short comments. One, a part-time position has been filled by the state as the 4-H advisor. They will be getting... It's a young man. Well, I don't know if he's young, a man. He'll be getting Thursday, May 9, and Casey McDaniels will be bringing him over to introduce to us and give us an update on the 4-H soon. She didn't give me a date yet. I attended this morning the Chambers Breakfast where Governor Dugard spoke about his trip to China and hopefully advances we'll make in economic growth in the state of South Dakota. And also spoke to Kyle just briefly this morning from Equalization, and he handed out a sheet, which I will give to each one of you, listing who our largest tax entities are in Minnehaha County. He said there'd been a article... Kyle, maybe you want to just come... Just give me just a real brief of what you... Because I can recap it, or you can just say it.
Good morning. Commissioner Kyle Halsett, Equalization. I've been contacted by a newspaper up in the Minneapolis-St. Paul neighborhood looking for dirt on tax exemptions. And what I supplied them wasn't the dirt they were looking for. So, I want to make sure each one of the commissioners has a list of the top 20 taxpayers in the county.
Thank you.
What the values are in the taxable amounts. There was some, I guess, concern about the Pentagon facility that's being put up right currently by Sanford. It is totally taxed. The motel, all of the facilities out there are 100% taxed, so that should diffuse any bad press from Minneapolis-St. Paul area.
Thank you, Kyle. Any other comments? Nope, that was it.
They can't stand the fact that South Dakota's better than them.
Any other comments? Any other liaison reports? If not, any new business? I will just briefly say that next week, we will have Craig Anderson here, who will be the chairperson of the, I guess we'll call it, the Community Corrections Facility Conversation and all of the governor's initiative to divert inmates from the state penitentiary to other resources. And of course, that's going to have a major effect on county government because of the fact that we have a full jail and we're a growing community. And the projections are that we will see additional clients over a period of time. So, this is an initiative that we started to address a few weeks ago with the fact that we need to look for alternatives that are less expensive than what we have currently. And he will come to introduce himself. He's got, as Robert will tell you and Ken will tell you, incredible leadership skills and has been involved in executive management from Dialnet and many other organizations, is now semi-retired. But anyway, Craig will be here next week, and we will get the process started to address some of these issues and how it'll affect county government in the next 30 to 40 years, Any other new business? Good morning again.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Highway Department. I'm prepared to give an informal briefing on the Operation Timber Strike, should you wish to hear some quick details about that.
We'd be happy to hear them.
Okay. FEMA was at our office yesterday, or last week, with Lynda Young auditing some of our operations. I believe that many of these expenses will be reimbursed through a FEMA emergency declaration. Overall, to date, there's $207,000 to $500 roughly expended in labor, equipment, and fuel costs. $28,000 of that was inside our county, not associated with schools or towns. We have about $38,500 more in labor equipment materials to go to address the remaining parts of our county cleanup. $18,700 was expended at Valley Springs, mostly the school and town. Similar, $10,900 at Garrettson, $19,100 in Brandon, and a small amount of joint forces that we encumbered in helping Union County to the tune of $993. And then overall in Sioux Falls, with all the schools that we assisted on, there's $90,300 in expenditures. We believe it'll take about two more weeks to complete the remaining county work, and we have a crew of nine people heavily armed with chainsaws and grapple equipment and skid steers and trucks and the like. So, I can answer any questions if you wish, but that's the briefing.
Thank you, Shannon. Any questions for him? Commissioner Pecus?
I think it's great that the state of Minnesota, those particular counties were designated by Barack Obama as being devastated and got access to the FEMA funds. And I was wondering, we passed our declaration several weeks ago. Have you heard anything?
I have not. That's probably a Lynda Young question, and it looks like Ken might have some information for you.
This was an article that just happened, I believe, to be in to this morning's paper as well, in that Governor Dugard has assembled all of the reports that have come from the various emergency management directors in the counties in the impacted area, and he has formally submitted that request for disaster declaration to FEMA, and that on our behalf, that just happened very recently, and that we have not received any official notification that that's been granted as of this time. But it has been sent.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions for Shannon? Shannon, would it be possible for you just to send us an email with those numbers that you gave us? Because I've had a couple of emails from other people wanting to know what the cost is.
I have a copy here. I could leave with you, or I could send you the email directly to Ken.
Either way, it's fine.
Which way you prefer, Ken? Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any other new business? Pat?
Good morning. Pat Herman, Planning Department. Since we're talking about cleanup, on Saturday, we had our cleanup in the northwest part of the county for those six townships. And we want to thank Tri Valley School, which was nice enough to let us use their parking lot. Thank goodness, since it was nice and wet that day.
That's right.
It was a little cold, but we had a lot of good participation. And in that area, we really got appliances and tires. That's really what people had to clean out. A lot of people said they were cleaning out slues of things that had been dumped and brought those in. So, we had steady people there, and we only got one person with three branches in that area, so... But it was... It went really well. And again, Tri Valley was really nice to let us use their lot for that.
Any questions for Pat? Good morning again.
Was there a lot of water in those tires?
Surprisingly, not. There were just a few that were really waterlogged when you threw them, but...
Pat, what do we have left in that grant to be able to do this again?
We're at the... Pretty much at the end of the grants. The numbers are just coming in now from what it's cost us to do this last one, so I'd say within a week, Ryan will know.
Okay.
But we may be able to do one more this year. I think we have to do it in the first half of this year, so we're getting really close, and then we'll have to look at reapplying.
Where would that be if we do do another one?
We would go up to the northeast border of the county. We haven't been in that area. Again, focus more on the farmsteads and not the subdivisions this time.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Kelly?
Yeah, what's been the results of the after-check?
Really well. I mean, a lot of the people that we had concerns about have taken advantage of it. Sometimes it was just a cost thing for people to get rid of stuff, so... And the feedback is always good. People are happy to be able to, you know, bring this stuff in, especially when we're in the north, because it is such a trip to get down to the landfill. It saves them gas money alone just to be able to bring it to these sites.
But we are doing compliance checks after the fact.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Pat, for your work. Any other old business? If not, I'd like to adjourn into executive session on pending litigation issues and personnel issues.
Let's make that motion.
Second. Motion and a second to go into executive session for pending litigation and personnel. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passed.